Okay. All right, let's start off. First of all, do we have any guests?
Um, all of our, um, Rob, Rob is a guest. Uh, everybody, this is staff member.
Andrew Jones.
And who is Rob?
Oh, Rob Sparko's friends.
Oh, okay, Rob Sparko, okay. Great. All right, moving right and welcome, moving right along. I hope everyone read the minutes from November and also from January workshop. And incidentally, thank you all who came to the workshop for spending your time on a Saturday morning. I thought it was a really good, good presentation and a good workshop.
It was.
I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Some move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Okay, doesn't matter.
Okay, is there any discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor approving the minutes, say both, both sets.
Yeah, you need to do, you need to do visual so they can count.
I don't, I don't see anybody, so.
Okay.
You'll have to tell me.
It's good.
Okay, all in favor, give me a thumbs up.
Look, yeah, Logan did it with the.
Okay, I got Susan, Kathy, Stephanie, okay. Any opposed? Hey, minutes are approved. I don't have a report. I have really tried to stay out of the public the last month or so. Uh, I've been very fortunate and got my shots, both of them.
Oh, wow.
Yay.
Well, I'm a happy person and my wife is too, so I think we'll be venturing out into public a little more now. Moving on. We have the director's report. Casey, you ready to go?
Yeah, um, Andy and I talked, instead of me reading the whole report, I'm just gonna hit the highlights and I'll start posting it with the video, so it'll be out there.
Liz, that's not a problem, is it, if we do it that way? Liz Shrek?
If you do.
If we post it. Rather than reading it for the minutes?
My report, he's talking about my report. We post the minutes and the video.
Oh, right.
But we hadn't been reading my report yet, so I'm just gonna start putting my report up there.
I think that should be fine. If you, if you want a legal clarification.
Yeah, I'm putting you on the spot.
Attorney, but I, I am not an attorney. Um, I mean, if that's what you've been doing for the minutes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, if you have your volume on, please turn it off. Please turn your volume off. Okay, all right, um. Uh, some of the information in here is just the same kind of just updating you where we are with the direct strategic directions, staff development, and we are continuing to use the master schedule, and we're gonna keep doing that in perpetuity, and the link is always in this report for you to access if you would like to see the schedule. Um, I wanted to let you know that Be Aware Blunt and A Place to Stay moved into their spaces in December. Uh, and A Place to, Be Aware Blunt is only, it's a temporary use of space, um, and they're located in the foundation office. They're only there part-time. Um, Aunt Janay, remind me how long they're gonna be in the library? Can't hear you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so, um, what is it? They are planning to be here until about May. Um, and by that time, they'll know if they'd like us to, if they'd like to stay longer, and they might enter, re-enter into it then. So.
And then a, a place to stay is also there on a, on a part-time basis. They are in one of the fish bowls meeting spaces. It was a study room. The large one that's located on the other side of adult services periodicals. There is signage, and they've got their, their space fixed up really nice. So that is where those two, um, partners are, and they're in, so we're glad to have them. Obviously, our outreach and virtual programs, we are still doing everything virtually, and the community is making heavy use of our online resources, our new ones and our existing ones. I don't know, did any of you have a chance to see A Christmas Carol? That the staff did? Um, I think they did a marvelous job in lieu of being able to do anything else for Christmas. I, I loved it.
Yeah, I saw part of it, and it was well done.
Um, and then, of course, Canopy and Hoopla are our new resources. And, uh, Hoopla we've had since early, since spring last year, and then we added Canopy. Are y'all familiar with Canopy? It's a, um. Got some class, it's, it's a digital streaming that has classics, classic movies and, um, documentaries, so it's, uh, it's an interesting, uh, resource, and it's starting to pick up use-wise. I don't know if you noticed, but at the bottom of the monthly, monthly use statistics, uh, I've added the information for both Hoopla and for, um, Canopy, so you can get an idea of how the community is, is using it. Um, under the facilities projects, uh, the only part that I need to bring to your attention is the boiler and the roof, so, um, we have had, we knew, you know, we know, one of our boilers, we have been scavenging for parts for the boiler that we have, and it's been running, um, but it's starting to go down more and more. And so we decided it was time to get the other boiler, get a new boiler in to replace the one that we've scavenged, so we'll have to that work.
Casey, can we go, let's do that new business.
Yeah, we will. I'm just explaining that in my report, I've given you a breakdown of, of, um, the cost and everything, and then also the roof. Um, I gave you, um, a breakdown or a narrative on the situation with the roof and Randy's request, and the board will need to, um, approve, discuss and approve both of these um, tonight if possible. Um, also, I've put the fund balance. Um, as of June 30th, our fund balance was six hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents. And if we are able to do these transfers, then that would put our fund balance at five hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty. Um, in 2020, uh, I, um, just kind of recapped in the report, um, the process for looking at, um, the library sustainability plan and, uh, listed assumptions, and then I also gave the board the steps that we're gonna go through, so in March, we'll look at staffing reduction. And, um, I mean, in February, we'll look at staffing reduction, in March, we'll look at an adapted org chart and restructuring, or the library service progression. And then, uh, April will be for a revised and updated revenues plan. And then May and June will be, uh, where we talk about, um, what a multi-year growth plan will look like based on decisions the board makes through the spring. We have filled our, our custodian position, um, and, uh, Adam Hembry, we, we lost a part-time librarian in December, and we didn't want to fill that position with a permanent person because we didn't really know what the budget situation was gonna be, so Adam Hembry was our, um, graduate student, uh, he did an internship with us last semester, and he's working for us for a month in a few week, a few months, I mean, a semester and a few months, until he graduates and goes off to wherever he's gonna go, so we have a, we have a temporary fill with him, and then, of course, Amy Gaddis, um, was, is just a part-time, um, patron services assistant right now, or associate. Kathy is going to retire at the end of February. And stepping into her place is Anna Gomber. Anna is with us tonight. You wanna say something, Anna? Say hello.
Hi, um, I'm very excited. I know it's big shoes to fill, um, but I'm very excited to work more closely with you all.
Would you do us a favor and pull your mask down just for a second? There you go.
Sorry. Still in the library.
Yeah, there, yeah, I think y'all are familiar with Anna's father, Carl, who is in Pistol Creek Catch of the Day and is a professor at Mirable College, so, um, and a very big library supporter, so we're excited to have Anna join us, and I think y'all will enjoy working with her. Um. And that's pretty much the rest of the, the rest of the report, it's just statistics, and then links to the newsletter and, um, the actual raw data for our use statistics, so, um, do you have any questions about the narrative part of the report?
Okay, thank you, Casey.
All right, um, any questions about the financial part?
Good, moving right along.
All right.
All right, Angela, Foundation Report. Incidentally, Angela, I wanna, my unmute, no, I just wanna thank the Foundation for putting out the newsletter, the information, but it was great. And love to see it.
Right, well, um, I can tell you the results of our first meeting of the 2021, uh, year. Uh, at our meeting, we did the usual business meeting of approving reports and accepting, uh, minutes and looking at our financials. I can also tell you that we approved our meeting dates for the coming year. Basically, we will meet on the second Friday of the month at eight thirty in the morning, and I've listed out those dates, and I know that Kathy Harmon has them to hand off to everyone at the library. So those should be published, and we'll have them on our website as well. We reviewed responses to our year-end letter that was sent in December, and our statistics rundown on that is that we mailed about three hundred and seventy letters. We received twenty-five replies and five thousand, twenty-five dollars of donations in response to that letter. We also took the time to share specific feedback that we got. Several of us had someone stop and tell us what they liked, or what they wish we would do differently next time, so we've noted that down to plan for future mailings. Uh, we acknowledge that Eliza Kamanser has spent a lot of time after that mailing dealing with all the envelopes that came back and updating our contacts list, and really make sure, making sure that we don't lose the information the mailing gave us, as well as the other benefits of the information. John Dockery and Jane Broth have set up PayPal and Square accounts, so that we are set to take online payments and in-person credit card payments at future events, so we've added that new technology into our methods of giving. It no longer has to be a paper check that we take to the bank. And finally, we started talking about our projects for the next six months. They include building out our foundation webpages to have a little more, more information about what projects we've done and what we hope to do. And we are planning how to highlight those things, uh, coordinating with the library on using their, uh, mailing list for electronic newsletters and communications, and we are, uh, reviving the Champion of the Library Award, so look for more news coming on that with a target of trying to have a mid-year event in early summer, depending on what the world does around us, except possibly. Are there any questions from you all on what the Foundation is up to?
What is the champion of the library?
It, when or what?
What?
It is an award that the, uh, Foundation Board gave for several years, a handful of years, just highlighting individuals from the community who have spent time, effort, uh, and, and personal connections, trying to build, uh, the library into something for our community. So it's just an acknowledgement of the work that community members do who have been involved in the Blood County Library and making it a better place.
Great, sounds terrific. Good, any questions of the Foundation? Thanks, Angela.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Does your website have a donate button on it?
It does. That is the, one of the things that we just got set up i- in advance, is setting the letter up, so when you go to our page, it will give you the information for how to send a paper check if you prefer, or there's a link to use a PayPal account on that page.
Good, any other questions? Good, good report. Okay, speaking of good reports, Bruce Robertson. How are the friends doing? Are Bruce in here, is he?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, good, okay, hey, hi.
I'm here. We just got done with our fifteen minutes ago. Uh, the quick report on the Friends of the Library. Our, our income streams continue to be strong, especially through eBay in the, uh, November, December, no, in the No- November and December, we have had record-making income generated through our eBay sales. Um, we've expanded the eBay footprint down in the basement to make it more, uh, distant-friendly, user-friendly, everything else, where we've gotten a few more computers down there with, uh, uh, help from Casey's folks, and, uh, we made in December, I think, over eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, and they're expecting nearly that amount in January. So that, the, the sales in our eBay department continue to just, uh, blossom. We're, we're thinking that probably in the spring they'll fall off, but they haven't fallen off yet. Uh, also, on our, in the main floor of the library, we have three efforts going on. We've got the Friends bookstore, we've got the, the bookshelf across from the cafe, and the, uh, the main lobby, which Casey generously has allowed us to put books for sale in the main lobby. Before Christmas, of course, we had lots of Christmas books, and now we've got gardening and trees and all kinds of springtime books up there now for sale, and I think in, in December, that whole effort brought in another fourteen hundred bucks, so that's been very nice for us.
Bruce, it really, it really enlivens the library too. It looks great. It's just so much fun to see books out.
We have a, a woman, Kathy Sellback, who has, uh, puts a lot of time into stocking both the store and the shelves out in the, in the main area. Um, and she's done a really good job. Uh, we canceled our, our three-day sale in December, and we decided not to have one in January. Um, and, uh, we, after quite a bit of discussion at our meeting, uh, today, we've decided to probably get back to an appointment-only sale in some, in the second week in March. So we're, we're probably will not do any, uh, s- sales in February. We may have a few. Um, we, we have had just a few, um, individual sales to a, a few small groups, but, uh, they haven't been advertised. We'll, we'll continue with a few of those, but, um, as it looks like now, the board has approved to, uh, a, uh, a sale in, in March. It'll probably be a two-day, two-day appointment-only sale. The first day will there's only the second day, will probably be a hybrid of members and the general public. But our intent is to keep it safe and keep it very limited.
Sounds great.
That's basically it.
You all have done so well. It's been great. Questions of the friends? Okay, thank, thanks again. It's been great. Unfortunately, you keep putting the best books that I like to read up front, and I have to buy one every time I walk in. It's not good.
They go quick, too. There was a Hardbound Calvin and Hobbs Ultimate Collection. I walked by and I went, I, I really need to get that, and I came back to my office and called my husband. Said, should we, should I get this? He's like, heck yeah. It was gone. Should've picked it up and taken it with me.
That's good. I wanna really compliment the library staff with, with everything that's been going on. You really don't know that anything is going on. They've taken care of everybody that walks in the door. It just really is nice, and it's fun to see people sitting there reading and being in every area in the library. It's, it's, it really feels good. I mean, we are really fortunate to have this kind of a fa- facility in Blood County and in Tennessee, so thank you, thank you, staff.
We've been averaging just under five hundred people a day. Steady.
Okay, Liz, Shrek, can you tell us what's going on in, in Tennessee?
Can you hear me now? Yes, okay. That double mute, it always gets me. Um, so, uh, not a whole lot. I sent my report, of course, um, we're just, everyone is holding, holding steady, uh, and, and doing very well, as you mentioned, um, at responding to the pandemic and still providing really necessary library services during this time. Um, most of our libraries are kind of just all across the board. Um, several have, uh, pulled back, um, phases in December. Um, we have others that, uh, have, have felt comfortable having full service, and, and many have modified services, so it's just all different um, service models across the state, really. Um, so we, of course, um, are promoting the trustee certification program, um, especially right now as we begin a new year. Um, that is a standard for trustees to have completed that um, program within their first year. That is the, uh, education program for library board members that the state has put together, uh, covers ten different modules, uh, from things to, from finance to planning and personnel and, uh, policymaking, all the sort of issues that all library board members um, have within their board duties. And so the library's benefit, um, with tech grants, uh, by how many trustees have completed that program. And so if you have not, and you need help registering, or you have any questions about it at all, please let me know. Um, the tech grant applications typically go out around May, uh, and so, um, and I, the deadline is usually in July, so we're encouraging our board members to kind of start thinking about that, and in the next five or six months, and maybe try to, um, get that accomplished. If you, if you haven't been able to, now's the time, uh, so let me know if you have any trouble registering, uh, for that. Uh, we continue to update our COVID-19 LibGuide page on the, um, State Library and Archives LibGuides with valuable resources for our libraries, um, as they deal with, continue to deal with this where we are. Uh, we also, of course, and I will continue to let all the board chairs and library directors know as well, um, it's also included in my report, the latest executive order extending the provision for electronic meetings through February the 27th. Um, as those come out, and, uh, anything extends further beyond that, we'll, of course, continue to let you know and keep you updated. Uh, the exciting news for us is, uh, we have the 2021 Top Grant, which is Training Opportunities for the Public Grant, uh, that is available. This will be our fourth year for offering that grant. Um, we partner with the ECD. Yes, uh, to offer funds for, uh, instruction, um, on various topics. Um, if libraries need to bring in an instructor to teach classes to the public, uh, for information and digital literacy, so we're excited about that. Uh, also, there's a, a provision, there's no match for instruction funds. There is a small match anywhere from ten to thirty percent based on your library level, uh, for equipment also, um, in that, so we're, we're very excited about that, that grant opportunity. And I know Blood County takes advantage of that, so we're, we're glad to provide that. Uh, otherwise, um, of course, we've posted our reads statistics. Um, I know in my, I think, last month's report, and also maybe this month's report, we have expanded our magazine collection in the consortium, so we're excited about that. Um, and that's really all I have to report, unless anyone has any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, Liz. Hope you're staying healthy.
Yes, thank you.
Hope everyone around the, around the state is in libraries.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to old business, and Bruce, I'm gonna put you on the spot here. I wanna talk about the bathroom proposal that you brought up the last meeting, and I wanna see if we can't move ahead with that as, as soon as we possibly can to help the friends out. Can you go over that one more time?
Well, we had, we had put a marker, I know, on our budget to.
I lost them.
Yeah. He went away.
Well.
Andy, could you repeat the question? Were you asking him what our understanding with the Friends is these days?
No, what I was asking for, for him was to go over the request again for a, a facility in the lower level to, to actually have a restroom facility, a hands-washing area and a restroom facility for the Friends, and what he had proposed was for us to actually put in what was originally proposed as a part of our remodel. And what I wanted to do is see if we couldn't actually go ahead with that, and what we needed to do to actually move forward to get some costs and, and some expense on that, and see where we could be quickly with that. The Friends have done such an incredible job. It's there. The rest, the, the lower level is there, we're just not using it, and that would be another reason that we can use it for other things.
Um, and, and of course, he needs to answer for the Friends, but, um, it's, it, you know, obviously, um, but, um, my understanding, um, of past years, which may not be a current accurate understanding, is that the Friends can't spend their money on capital projects.
No, I was hoping that we would discuss this and get the Foundation involved with this.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
But he's gone, so.
Bruce, you're muted. Can you unmute, and then we can hear you?
There you go. There, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Well, for some reason, my iPad, I don't know if it's out of power or what, but so I'm, I'm back on my phone.
What, what I wanted to put you on the spot is to talk about the restroom facility downstairs.
Right.
How we should go about doing it. Can we, I, I know you can't spend your money for it, but what I would like to do is get some kind of a proposal out there with, with costs and location. We know pretty much where, where it was originally in the original plan, but I'd like to see us get that going to help you all, because it was something you really wanted.
Yeah, and, um, I tried to make contact with, is it Chris, who's the architect?
Boris, yes.
Um, but, uh, wasn't successful there, um, and that, I really haven't taken it too much further. Uh, and so it's, it's kind of set idle for a couple of months.
Well, I, I'd like to see us go forward with that. Can, can Casey and I and, and you get together and, and and talk to Chris about this and go forward?
Yes.
And put it out?
Most.
And Angela, what, what do you think about going to the Foundation for something like this? I have no idea what we're talking about money-wise. But bathrooms are usually the most expensive in a building. Have any, any feedback from anyone on this? Any thoughts?
Well, I think the first, the first thing we need to do is get some cost. So I think if we just take that step and we get Chris to, to give us an estimate of cost, then we can go from there.
Okay.
Is anybody opposed to us doing that?
No, but I agree. I mean, you know, there's not much to talk about until we see a proposal.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on into new business. Casey, you were talking about inclement weather proposal?
Yeah, we just were running into, if the schools are closed, what do we do? That kind of thing. There's no, the inclement weather proposal is pretty fixed that we only close, Merrill City Schools are closed. So.
Let's talk about that because I think that's a real problem considering not everybody in the library lives in Merrillville. And if you're living in the county and it snowed, I know when it snowed the last time, I couldn't get out of my driveway at all. And if I was working, I couldn't get there. And with your staff being reduced and the hours reduced, I, right now, the board is supposed to vote on whether we close or not. And I, I'm wondering if we shouldn't allow either a combination of the, of the library director and the chair and maybe one other person to determine whether we should close the library or not. Any, any discussion on that?
For inclement weather or for any reason?
Incliment weather.
Incliment weather.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not opposed to that, Andy, but we've been using the school criteria for years. And it works. And it works. I mean, what, what's the problem? I don't, I don't even understand why we're revisiting this.
Well, I think, I think the problem is going to be in the future is, is as we start reducing staff, we're not going to be able, and that's not going to be a problem this year going forward. But going into next year, next winter, if we have a limited staff and part of that staff lives out of, out of city, then I'm not sure that we should adjust accordingly. But I'm open for discussion on that.
Yeah. My own reaction is let's cross that bridge when we come to it. I, you know.
Well, you know, we don't have anything built into the policy that, that talks about situations like over Christmas. You know, that's when we had our snow. We were lucky that by the time the library opened again, it was not a problem. And I don't know, Susan and I went round and round too a few times because the snow happened on Saturday or Sunday when the schools aren't open, you know, making a call. So it was just, the conversation was just, you know, we really, we maybe it needs to be expanded at some point to cover some of those other situations. So we know exactly what to do and we're not going.
Yeah, I, I, I understand now. Thank you. That was helpful. You know, that you're really, the problem is covering days that are not school days.
Right, exactly. Because, you know, we did have times where Merrillville wasn't open.
Yeah.
They weren't physically meeting, so they wouldn't
Yeah.
call a day. So it just, you know, it just, the conversation came up and I don't, I don't know that it's even something that has to be talked about this year because and I think we're probably through with our snow days.
Well, we, we may or may not. So you, so Andy, I'm, I'm back to what you were suggesting, maybe you and Casey. You know, I don't know how the other board members feel, but I would be perfectly comfortable with you and Casey being positioned to have the authority to make a decision for Saturdays or Sundays when we're not in school sessions to take a look at the, the weather circumstances and make a command decision. I would be very comfortable with that.
How do, how do other board members feel on that?
I agree with Kathy. I think that makes sense. You know, that's, let's not put anybody in danger. You know, and on the weekends. And if we were thinking about moving away for some reason from the Merrillville schedule. You know, I'd be curious, you know, how many snow days we've had in the past couple of years and try to project like that. But I think that starts convolute and everything. So I, I like it. Simple, follow Merrillville schools and then on the weekends, just, you know, that's why we have such great leadership. So.
Yeah. There you go.
Susan, you've been involved in that. What do you think?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think though it would be good to have, to codify it in some way, just to make it very clear that we're following the Merrillville, the Merrillville City School schedule for snow days. But in the event that we have inclement weather on a Saturday or Sunday, it will be left up to the discretion of the director and the chair about what we're going to do. Just so that it's written down and that's that, you know, because that's what, that's the practice we've been.
Yeah, it's just not, it's just not official. And there's this, I don't know really what the, so we can, Aunt Janey and I can work on a amendment to the policy that just clarifies that and bring it to y'all for review.
Once you do that, we'll bring, bring it up at the next meeting.
I think you want to have somebody help you make that decision too, that lives in the city of Merrillville. Because Casey, you live in Knoxville. You may not be able to get over to Merrillville, but Merrillville itself might be passable. We always use the police.
Yeah, I am. I'm the worst person to, because I don't ever want to close. It's like, I start getting calls from people in the, in the city going, are we really going to open? I'm like, really? Is it that bad? Have they sold? I'm the worst. It takes staff pressure to make me think about it. So, but yeah, I don't, I, I agree. So what do y'all think? Who should the third person? Should we call the police? Merrillville City Police?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think, you know, they have to keep up with this. They have to keep up with what, you know, they're, they're, they're in sort of an anticipatory mode and trying to anticipate what, you know, what, what might be out in front of them because of weather. And so they're a nice resource. I have no problem with what Stephanie's recommending.
Yeah.
I would also, typically that's the handle by Public Works. Helping and clearing the roads. So that might be, if you talk to the department head for Public Works in Merrillville, they should be able to guide you with that as well. And I believe they have this GIS app that can kind of tell you when the, the streets have been cleared as well. But they would have more, you know, guidance on that.
I can always too text Lance because he's pretty good about, you know, we get our weather updates and all of that, our emergency updates. And I could always text him too and say, hey, what's going on?
Casey, why don't you, why don't you guys work on a, on a proposal and we'll bring it up next meeting?
Will do.
Thank you. All right, talk about the hotspot policy and the internet policy. You, it's in your packet.
Typically, what we do with policy is we give you the draft at one meeting and then you can ask questions, make comments, and then we don't vote on it till the next meeting. So this is the first time you've seen the policy. Does anyone, Stephanie sent me correction, which we've got. Does anyone have any comments or thoughts that we might need to incorporate in a final draft?
I was concerned on the amount of money that you're charging for people who are late. $2 doesn't seem to be much to charge someone for being late and yours, your hotspots are gone most of the time.
What we do is we charge them the same amount that it costs to access the internet. So they're paying the internet fee. We don't rent the equipment. We don't pay for the equipment and we can't rent equipment without paying taxes anyway. So we're not renting the equipment. We are charging the public who takes out a device, $2 a day for the cost of the internet service. So that's all we're charging them. If they don't bring us the device back, we can get a new device from the provider at no cost to us.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that explains it better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have anything on this.
Yeah, we just move on and we, or do you want to vote on it now or do you want to wait till next?
Honestly, I feel like it's good. It's always good for the board to have a month to think about it. It gives us a month too.
Okay, okay. All right.
When would you start using this particular process?
When do we start using? We, we've been using it.
So, so we've been using it, but no charge? Or just, is this new?
Oh, no, 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 no. We have a policy currently in place.
Okay.
This is an edit. And what we're doing is we're going to be at, we're adding the computers. So we're going to start circulating the computers, our older computers for the public. And we need to incorporate that into the hotspot. So it's more of an equipment policy.
The charge you do have on paper now is just charge you, you're doing currently.
The, yeah, we're not, we don't charge people. We're not going to charge people to circulate the computers, but we will charge them if they don't bring them back.
Right.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll talk about this next time.
All right.
Repaired to vote on it. Let's go to the internet policy.
Same thing, well, same thing. You want to have questions about it? We had, we had these policies. We are updating them. These are, our internet policy was very old and dated and made references to things we didn't even do anymore. So these are updates. And they were so different that there wasn't, we just had, basically we're starting over because they're so different.
Okay, we'll talk about this next time. All right, next is the roofing project. I hope you all took a look at the pictures of the roof. I think the key picture is the second one. The first one, you can barely see the patches, but they're there in the water. Every one of those little squares were leaks that had to be repaired over the years. And then the second one shows you bigger ones. And I think if you look along the wall where the brick wall is, you'll see a crack line that runs the entire length of the roof of that wall, which to me would mean that water is seeping in there. And so it's obvious the, the roof has to be repaired. So is there any discussion on the roof before I ask for a motion to, to move the funds to pay for it? At least the beginnings of it.
Did everyone understand my discussion in the narrative, what happened? And what we'll be paying for? So I think we're getting, we're getting the best deal here. And the commission did approve it. If the board approves to spend the money, then, you know, it's, it's a go.
The roof is warranted, but I don't, I didn't see how long it was warranted, but I think that's something we'll talk about as we go forward. Do I hear a motion to ask to have $66,250 from the fund balance moved so that we could fund the beginnings of a new roof project?
I move. I think a roll call vote.
Okay.
Kathy?
Kathy, did you do that?
I'll second.
Yeah, you need to get your motion and second out there first.
I'll second.
Okay, with Kathy Hammond made the motion and Logan second?
Yes.
Okay, Andy Simon?
Yes.
Kathy Hammond?
Yes.
Lauren Emmer. She gone?
She's, well, she's audio only. And she doesn't have it on.
Logan Hill?
Yes.
Hey, Sues Balenzuela?
As much as I like the design on the roof right now for aerial photography, I'm going to say yes.
You like the patchwork quilt look?
Yes, I'm a drone pilot. What can I say? That's character to the imagery.
Great. We need to have you come back out then lots of times while they're installing it.
That's true.
John Reagan?
Yes.
Susan Schneibl?
Yes.
Stephanie Thompson?
Stephanie, yes.
And Susan Williams? That's a thumbs up from Susan. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
There was eight yeses and one not available. So motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We'll take that to the county and we'll move, move on with this. The next, next item is the boiler replacement project. That is in your packet also. And that is to replace the boiler system. Let, let me talk about the boiler system first and then I want to address this a little bit. We have a two boiler system right now. Two boilers to operate the heating system in the library. One of them does not work at all. If you, if you read Angelina's note, she called it dead. And not only is it dead, but some of the parts have been taken away from it. So it can't ever come back. And the proposal and, and those parts were used to operate the other boiler system so that it is working. But it has gone down three times in the last month. And the city or the county has been nice enough and, and our, our maintenance people have been good enough to actually get it running again so that the library has not had to close for lack of heat. So this proposal is to repair or to repla, actually replace the dead boiler system. It's a cost of $35,000. And the proposal is to fix one or replace one. I would like to talk about that. And then I'm proposing, I would like to see the board, I'd like discussion on it from the board. I'd like to see both of them replaced so that the library does not have to go through this five to 10 years from now with the same problems that's going to happen again with one of them going down. And then the other one going down. I'd like to, I'd like to have the county take the money and from, move the money from our fund balance and actually replace both of them. So we have two working boiler systems that work and we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah. So Andy, can we assume that, you know, that it's approximately 35,000 times two then? That, that our discussion is a $70,000 discussion?
It's a, it's a, it's both. It's a 70 or a 35.
Okay, I, I really like the way you're, 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 you know, suggesting this. You know, when a system, when an HVAC system breaks down three times in a month and you're, you're on borrowed parts that you're, you're robbing other systems for and that kind of, I mean, it sounds like it's a very precarious situation. So if we're going to pay somebody to mobilize at the library to replace one, I would think that there would be a little bit of an economies of scale, not a lot, but a little bit around some of the vendors' costs to just go ahead and replace two of them at the same time, rather than have them come back next year or whatever. I, I like the idea of going ahead and just biting the bullet and replacing them both. I could support that.
Other comments?
I would support that too because we know that the current boiler that's sort of, sort of functioning has gone down three times already. There's no reason to think we're not going to have problems with that in the future. I know we'll have a better one, but still I'd be, I, I'd, I'd be in favor of that. I had one question about um, looking at the contract, they said that uh, we would be responsible to somehow discard the, the board, but they're not gonna take it off, take it away. Is that anything costly for us to do, or how do we do that?
Um, no, I mean, if we don't have to keep the parts, they'll take it. That'll be part of it.
And I think so, I think somebody would be thrilled to death to come back for scrap and haul it away.
Okay, alright, alright.
Well, I, yeah, I, eh, eh, um, I, I can't imagine somebody being willing to install two new boilers and not removing from the premises. And, and, and if they're not willing to do that, I, I would vote for it. Let's move on to another vendor.
I thought I saw that in there.
Okay, then we need to make sure that's fixed.
Our system's proprietary. To, I mean, Dyken, Dyken's gonna take care of us. They're gonna take care of us.
Well, okay.
On one page, it says remove existing Raypack boiler.
Well, yeah, I thought it said that too, but, but Susan saw it somewhere else, right?
I did too.
Yeah, Logan did too, then, okay, it needs to be checked then. It's just, just double check your, 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 uh, proposal and all that. And make sure.
Actually, yeah, right below it, it is footnoted. It says customer responsible for disposal of existing Raypack boiler. Yeah, it sounds like they'll disconnect it in one part, but then the customers.
Yeah.
Kind of a contradiction.
Yeah.
But I think if we're doing two, we, we've got some leverage there.
I just need to clarify that, because I don't know about can I using for parts, we, we're gonna have two new systems that may be very different from what we've got now.
Wouldn't need to keep it if we replace them. Gone.
Dawn, is Dawn? Can Dawn communicate?
Yes, sir.
What is, uh, I, I hate to put you on the spot here, but.
I don't know anything about it.
But, but you do know something about the county commission? When we go and ask for mo- for more money coming out of our funds, how is that gonna fly?
I, I think if it's coming out of your funds and the fund balance, I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
I would hope not.
It's, it's not like you, the library doesn't ask for a lot. Um, you know, they, they come when they need a new roof. They need a new book, but it, they're not asking for a lot, and if it's in your fund balance, I cannot imagine them saying no.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I won't hold you to that, but thank you.
I think it would be worth exploring with Dyken too, before we go back to the, to the county commission. If there is any benefit, any fiscal benefit to us for, for, um, hi- for, for purchasing two at the same time, it might be cost effective. And if it is cost effective, that's just something that should go into the proposal.
That's a great idea.
Well, what we've discovered with the school system is that because some of those systems are so old that it is gonna save a lot of money in the long run.
Right.
On those, those bills. So that's another plus. Updating those systems, um, is gonna save you money in the long run. So that's another plus.
Just as a, you know, different, I know we have this proposal right here. If we are changing them, um, have we looked at any, I know that they're proprietary, what we have right now, but have we looked at any other, um, vendors? Um, if we're thinking about changing them, do they have to change it with the same type of boiler? Or just as a standard check, you know, go, coming back from military, you always got three quotes of whatever you wanted.
Um, it has to work with our, um, system, our VAB system. And so I'm not sure, um, about that. I see, I know that there is, um, Dawn Stallins and the mayor and some of those other officials are, um, hiring a company to evaluate all the county buildings. So you might call Dawn or, um, the mayor and question them about um, having that checked out first thing when they start that evaluation process. And I don't know when that's gonna happen. I just know that it's in the works. Um, and that's something that, you know, the board just paid Chris Soro to do that very thing.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Chris has done this.
A year and a half ago, so we actually already have uh, um, this evaluation out there that was very, very thorough, that was paid for. And, you know, a- a- all the strategic directions all along has been updating the HVAC system because it has never really worked properly. And, you know, with the boilers are the last part. They're the last, they're really the last part. We've, we've replaced the chiller, we've replaced the software system and put in new VAB, had all the dark work checked. And so the, the boilers are the last part.
But let's find out when they're gonna do this. And i- if it's anytime soon, then we'll, we'll take Asus's recommendation and see what else, what else might be there.
Can I share one regarding the vendor?
Sure.
Um, the county has the vendor go through a particular, there, there are different types of vendors. And Dyken has gone through a process where they have entered kind of into agreement where they're saying they are giving us the absolute best price. And by doing that, it means that the county can this, this certification that a vendor has means that, um, they're, they're gonna give them the best price that's, that, so they can, don't have to do the three bid process. Right, they're already part of a bigger bid. Um, and also, all of our, we are, our service contracts are with this vendor. So, I understand and appreciate where you're coming from, but we have already done all of that through other processes. And y'all, I have one boiler and the county's prepared to let us, I mean, they've already worked with us to secure, you know, uh, uh, the situation where we can get an order. We've already, we've already placed an order for this one vendor, I mean, for this one boiler, because it's an emergency. I mean, literally, it's an emergency. So, you know.
I'd like to see.
We can go.
Just get on with this.
We haven't, um, I, I guess, I, what I want to state for the record is that we've done due diligence on this, you know, through the course of our working on, you know, updating our systems. Um, and, uh, I can't, since we haven't taken this to the commission for approval, because we have to have board approval. If the board approves the request for both, um, both boilers, that is no problem. We can, we can amend our part and we can go ahead and send it through. We don't have to go back and, and we don't have to actually order the second one.
At the same time.
Until it goes through the, the commission.
Yes.
We don't have to go through the money moving process that we've already gone through for the one for the emergency. If that makes sense.
So, Ca- Casey, the only advantage is if we bought two from them, would they give us a lower price for two versus one?
I, I don't know. I don't know, because they're giving us, you know, a rock bottom price. I just.
For one, the ques- question, if we, if we, uh, purchased two, could we get it for less than seventy thousand dollars? And so that's, that's the question that should be asked, and we move forward on that.
I, I agree with you, Logan. I think that, since they'll have all the, if they'll have the manpower there, then there's no reason to duplicate that.
Exactly, um, so.
But we, we'll move on with that. Can I have a motion to, actually to approve this and, and go forward?
What's the motion?
No, that's why I say, can I have a motion? Would someone make a motion to, to approve this and go forward?
So given the, what's happened, and I make the motion to proceed with the, uh, the one boiler as it has been, it's almost kinda a moving part, and all the checks have been done with the procurement process, um, through the county. And, uh, but, um, if there, if we can find out if there's a benefit on the installation, I'm assuming that the, uh, the cost for the boiler would be the same for the second unit, but we could save on labor. Um, so then if it's lower than what we have to go ahead and approve that as well. Does that make any sense? That's a whole motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Second.
All in favor? You put your hand up or finger or thumb or whatever.
I have a question.
Okay.
Question is, are we approving for one or two?
Two.
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 True, okay.
But we're approving one with the, with the second, and if the second.
With proviso that we may get a second one.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Is the way I understood that motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Casey, before you, you send that off, I'd like to go to the city or the county with you. Within.
Well, yeah, no, it, um, I will have to get the quotes. And then, uh, I've, I've sent a message to, to Brian. I don't know if he'll get back to me tonight, just if there will be a cost savings or not.
Well, I think we need to talk to him personally.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he's in it, he's been in and out of the building the past few days. So, um, and we, you know, we have to have Andy, you and I will, we'll talk about it, what, what the next thing is. Okay, and, um, I want y'all to note that Lauren voted yes on, uh, the roof and voted yes on the boiler. She, she left and she's, she's up here now. So she's, it's in the, it's in the, um, chat. So Kathy, you can record that, um.
Alright, thank you. Now, we have twenty twenty-one budget, twenty-two budget?
It's just. Well, I, I put everything in the, in my report. It's just here because it's going to be something that we're gonna continue to work on. And next month will be, um, the recommendation for, um, salary reduction. Just, just as a recap, um, the library has really never had the funding it needed since the new building opened. And so, um, we've kind of been balancing the budget year after year with fund balance that we didn't spend. And then when, um, the salary restructuring through the county started, um, the library was fortunate enough to be part of all of that. And that kind of changed the playing field and, and we were, we were doing well. And then we ran into some troubles, you know, with, um, we got our inter-local agreement, which is good. Um, but we really have never been sustainable with a large number of part-time people. The board made a decision four or five years ago to begin, you know, moving staffing from part-time to full-time. Um, so the pattern and the approvals were already there. Um, with COVID, we have reduced our programming and services down to almost nothing relative to what we were doing. We have implemented, um, a master schedule. We have pretty much eliminated departments. We actually are, are operating on, everyone's working the customer service areas. Um, we have almost work teams instead of departments. Um, and there are aspects that we have, uh, um, in our response that we really like, that we think are very efficient and effective. So, um, having said all that, the issue that we're dealing with is the loss of library-generated revenues, okay? So this isn't something that the cities and the county can come in and fix. We have to address sustainability. And we have to have a plan moving forward that is gonna make our operations as efficient as possible, but allow us to provide and grow the level of service our community needs and expects. It's not gonna be a quick recovery. We're not gonna go back to normal and get our two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of library-generated revenues back. It is gonna be a slow process. But hopefully, it will run neck and neck with how the economy recovers and our available human resources. This situation has given us a chance to hit the reset button, is what it, what it has, and to really think purposefully about how we wanna go forward. We spend a lot of time on management that we don't need to spend. And we can free our professional and frontline support staff to actually spend the bulk of their time providing services, and that's what we want to do. Now, what the board will have to decide is how they want to get there at this point. So we will have plans for you to look at for the February meeting. Um, Liz, do you have any idea, or has anyone even said anything about when the MOE hours of operation might go back into effect?
Alright, um, as, I, I mean, as I've, you know, said, is, is libraries, as long as COVID is the reason for reduction of hours, then that's fine, um, with maintenance of effort. Um, but it, it has to be, you know, in direct response to the pandemic, of course. I, I don't have a particular timeline for that. Um, I don't think anybody has a timeline for what's happening. Um, but we're.
I just, okay, let me clarify one thing for the record. In the event that the Secretary of State comes back and says, okay, you have to open up the number of hours that were agreed to upon with your contract. If the library can't do it, they can apply for a waiver for one year to get back into it, right?
Typically, those are, those are, yes, you apply. Those are typically granted for a one-year period.
Okay, so at the point that that happens, if we are not able to restore the hours, we will have one year to fix it. So I want you to have that in your mind, because that is what I said in my presentation. Um, so that's where we are, and we will start the process, um, moving forward. And hopefully we'll have, um, everything laid out in a really clear and concise way for February. Questions for me? We're gonna earn around fifty thousand dollars this year. Our fines and fees come from, uh, overdue fines. We used to raise money with reserves. We're not gonna be able to put that service back. Um, meeting rooms and the cafe were our primary sources. So, um, it's just gonna be very slow. I think it will take three to five years if we don't diversify and have other sources for us to get anywhere near that two hundred thousand dollars. Um, questions, comments? This is difficult. There's a lot of difficult decisions that we're gonna have to make, but I think in the end, we will end up with um, a library that's staffed and structured in a way that is sustainable moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. Friend, friends funding request, wha- what was that?
We have one funding request.
I'm sorry.
What we are asking for is to, you know, the fifty thousand dollars we didn't ask to spend, that we just left on the side. We're asking the board to let us use, um, thirty-six hundred and seventy-eight dollars of that to, um, uh, expand what we originally asked for, um, for, well, actually, is there one or two?
There was.
There's, there's, there's two, but, um, anyway, after we got the, um, There's, there's, there's two, but, um, anyway, after we got the, um, equipment installed. To, for the cameras and, um. Microphones, we, we figured out we needed to add a little bit to it because I wasn't happy with. Uh, at the level that we have, so they came in and they told us what, um. What they could do to fix that, so the additional cost is thirty-six hundred dollars. And so that's.
And what is that, what is that gonna do?
It's gonna improve, it's gonna improve both visual and audio. Um, you know, the rooms are weird, the way they're set up, and in theory, it, it looks good, it works. But it's not as good as I think it's gonna need to be. At the point that we have more than, you know, ten people in there.
Say that one more, your last statement again?
I think it needs to be better than it is right now when we have more than ten people in there.
Okay.
You know, you know, the vendors just love me. I'm just gonna put that out there. Because I'm like, nope. It needs to do this, it needs to do that.
Okay, do we need a motion on this?
Uh-huh, absolutely.
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you. All in favor of spending the money for this? Say aye or fingers, okay? I see at least five. We're good. Anyo, anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. And foundation funding request?
There aren't any.
About that for a sec?
No funding, no, no request.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have anything, uh, else to bring up? Next meeting is the, uh. What's the date on the next?
February sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Five thirty? Well, I guess we will see you all then. Stay healthy, e- enjoy the sunshine out there for where I was calling now. Tomorrow, hopefully. Have a great day and great weekend. Thank you all.
You.
Casey, I'll give you a holler tomorrow.
Okay, no problem. Just record off.